Ah, okay, well, good morning, one and all. Let me convene the meeting of the Ad Hoc Revenue Source Task Force for a rate study review. And we'll begin with the roll call. Ms. Cook? Or?
Mayor Alan Galbraith.
Present.
Vice Mayor Peter White.
Here.
Vice Chair Katie Lee Ardeni. Chuck Fonda.
Here.
Wayne Armstrong.
Here.
Jack Stewart.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. The next scheduled item is introduction of the rate study team and task force members, but I think we just did that via the roll call. Is there anything further you would like to add there?
Yes, I would like to introduce the rate study team. Chrissy, could you go forward two slides?
Oh, I see, okay.
So, there's several city staff working on this rate study. And I just wanted to acknowledge the staff that's in the room and also the consultants that are in the room. Obviously, the city manager Jennifer Phillips, Director of Public Works Steve Palmer. Jennifer Weeks in the back has been also doing a lot of data pulling. Finance Director April Mitz, who is not here today because she is on vacation. Mandy Kellogg has also been pulling tons and tons of data sets for this rate study. And then also Chrissy Cook has been helping out. And then the two consultants you can see in the front row today are Catherine Hansford of Hansford Economic Consulting and Rachel Kirkpatrick.
Okay, very good. And that takes us to nomination of a task force chair. Informally, a task force member, Jack Stewart, has agreed to undertake this task for today. And so I would nominate him and ask for a voice approval of his nomination. All right, have everybody agreed?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart, you can take over. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to you members of the public for being here this morning. Thanks to your staff and consultants for all the work they've been putting in on this.
Jack's microphone on.
Would you mind turning on your mic, please?
There you go.
All right. I think I'll just leave it on. All right, well, thank you all for showing up this morning. Members of the public, the consultants, the city staff, and everyone else who's been involved in this project over the last several months. We're going, you've all got the agenda. We're going to make a slight change to the agenda. The original agenda shows one public comment period at the end of the meeting. And instead of doing that, we are going to have public comment open after each of the detailed rate components in the overview on page two. So if you go down to number five at the bottom of the first page and then turn to the second page, you'll see Roman numerals one through seven. After two through seven, we will have a public comment time for people to stand up and speak their minds. So I think at this point, Jennifer Tool, I will turn it back to you for the background.
So, part of the purpose of today's meeting is really to provide background information on our water system. And this is really meant as an educational meeting to bring everyone up to speed on terminology, current usage terms that the city uses. So there's industry standard terms, there's city terms, and so we want to make sure that everyone's speaking the same language before we get into the detailed nitty-gritty numbers and all of the really, really detailed information. So I just want to start with a water system overview and a little bit about our system. We have three water sources in the city of St. Helena. Bell Canyon, which is surface water, which holds about 765 million gallons of water. We have the Stonebridge Wells, which is two wells fed by Aquifer. And then we purchase about 600 acre feet of water from the city of Napa. So water is measured in several different ways. We have million gallons, we have hundred cubic feet, and then we have acre feet. So each one of those terms is a different unit of measurement for water. And the correlation can sometimes be a little bit difficult. But for the bulk of the presentation, when we're talking about the way that we measure water for billing is in hundred cubic feet or one unit is commonly what our staff refers to it as. So just, if people have questions about water measurement, please let me know. So, part of the mission of the water and wastewater divisions of Public Works is to really protect the public health and the environment. And we do that by drawing the water, treating water, distributing treated water, collecting the wastewater, treating the wastewater, and then doing it all over again, which in turns protects our environmental resources. We need to maintain and sustain economic growth. We need to sustain our infrastructure and also maintain it. And you're going to be hearing more about that from Mr. Palmer. We need to support public safety. This is a public good. Oftentimes, we take it for granted that we have clean water flowing from the tap with And we provide water to about 6,000 people. And when we speak of utility in this presentation, it means water and wastewater, because those are the only utility services that the city provides. So just kind of a high overview of our customer base. You can see that this chart set just shows the distribution of customer by type. So we have just over 2,500 connections. And that puts us in a small water provider category. There are several urban water providers, and that's important when it comes to water conservation, because the rules are different for small water providers versus urban water providers. We distribute about 55, or 550 million gallons of water every year. And I mentioned the hundred cubic feet, so the abbreviation in this presentation for hundred cubic feet will be HCF. So this graph shows you the water use by customer type. So the last one showed you by the number of customers, and this is who is using the water. So you can see, even though the bulk of our connections are residential, only about 50% of the water being used is being used by the residential customers. And now, a little bit on wastewater. So we are a full-service wastewater collector. We average about 146 million gallons per year, and we are operating under what we are permitted, our permitted capacity. So we have numerous assets in the city. They are getting very, very old. We have miles and miles of wastewater pipe and water pipe under the streets and over, connected to bridges and in various places. We have six storage tanks, pump stations, and then our water and wastewater treatment facilities. The bulk of our assets are well over 30 years, with some of them being significantly older than that. And we have to meet ongoing state, federal, and local regulations with these assets.
No, okay. Oh, do I just need to get closer, perhaps? Okay.
And please introduce yourself again.
Yes, I was just going to do that. So Catherine Hansford, I'm with Hansford Economic Consulting, and we were hired to do the rate study. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on what is a rate study. First of all, a rate study is to determine the amount of money that is needed to be raised through rates to operate the utility systems. The utility systems are accounted for in enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are intended to be self-sufficient funds. They are not to be funded from other sources, such as the general fund. So all the monies that are needed to operate the system should be generated through use charges, fees, grant monies, other sources of revenue than your typical city funds. So you wouldn't use things like sales taxes or property taxes for enterprise funds. It is used exclusively for the utility services. And, yeah, move on. So the purpose of this study is to identify the true cost to deliver water to the different users of the system. To determine the funding that's needed over the next five to 10 years to operate and maintain both utility systems. To create adequate revenue to fund the capital improvement program. To ensure that costs are allocated equitably to all customer classes. To establish appropriate rate schedules for five years and, in doing so, meet all the legal requirements, all the California legal requirements for water and wastewater studies. It's important that you note that the rate study looks in a 10-year horizon, but it's only recommended that rates be adopted for five years. The further out we go, the further we're looking into a crystal ball, the less precise our estimates are. And so it's fairly standard or typical to adopt rates for five years. It's legal to adopt them for 10, but it's not recommended. Well, I'll just add one caveat to that. If you have a rate schedule like you had adopted in 2011, your rates were tied to a CPI adjustment, that can only occur for five years. That is legally mandated. But if you adopt a set of rates, I would recommend you only go out five years, too. Okay. The rate-setting process, this should not be a jarring experience. It should be something that is continually looked at. So the recommendation would be to look at your rates every three to five years, or even sooner than that. So it should be something that should be kept a continual tab on. How are we doing? Are we meeting our projections? Do we need to adjust something? And so I'm showing with this circular diagram, you're going to be in this ongoing cycle. You're reviewing your rates. If it looks like they're not adequate, determine what is our revenue requirement. And that's the term for how much money do we need to raise through rates? Once you know what that revenue requirement is, how are you going to collect it? That's determining the rate structure. Once you've decided which rate structure best fits, then calculate the rates, implement them, and then review them. So it's an ongoing cycle. What about the revenue requirement for both of the utilities? So there are a few different sources of revenue in both of the utility funds, but predominantly the main one is the rates. And so when I talk about a revenue requirement, I'm talking about the amount that's needed from rates. So it's going to cover the costs of operations, maintenance of the assets. Jennifer had mentioned, you have a vast number of assets in water and wastewater. Those need to be continually looked after. You want to preserve their life for as long as possible, get the best use you can out of them. So you're going to have to spend money on system rehabilitation, as well as capital improvements for new facilities, new technologies that come, that you want to implement. And then there's also debt service. Both of the utility systems do have debt service and could potentially have more debt service in the future. The next thing to do is, once you've determined the revenue requirement, is to pick a rate structure. So how do you collect that money that you need? And that's collected through base charges and use charges. Another word of terminology here, base charges are also called service charges. That is the amount that you pay. It's a flat rate amount each month. So for your water bill, there's a flat rate amount, and then there's an amount that's based on the amount of water that you use. In creating or selecting a rate structure, you want to reflect the local customer usage patterns, and you also want to meet a myriad of objectives. And so I want to talk about those different objectives. So we look at this, it's kind of a flower diagram. Yes, number one, you've got to make sure you have revenue sufficiency. We talked about that. That's your revenue requirement. You also need to demonstrate to your bondholders that you're meeting all the requirements that they have set when they've loaned you money. Your rate structure needs to be simple, logical. People need to understand why it's set up the way it is. They need to understand what they're paying for. It needs to be administratively feasible. We don't want to select a rate structure that staff then struggles to implement, and they have to work with the software provider, and it's a lot of programming changes, or it's very expensive to implement. We want to make sure this is something that can be done with relative ease by staff. To further city policies and goals, talking about water conservation, local growth, certainly to support the actual system operations. And to be able to do all of that at a level of service that has, again, this is a policy decision that has been decided that is the level of service that you want to be providing. You have to meet certain state and federal regulations, has to be, has to meet clean water standards, for example. But there's some level, different levels of service that you may choose. So why is the city doing a rate study now? I already mentioned that rates should be reviewed every three to five years. This is a best practice. Planning for future improvements is critical. As we're talking about the CIP, the city knows that there are certain costs that are going to be incurred in the next few years. We need to create a financing plan. How are those facilities going to be funded? The financial standards drive a self-sustaining utility, again, referring to an enterprise fund. There should not be any loans from the general fund to support utilities. To determine an equitable cost recovery and to meet new and potentially changing regulations. I would also add that when looking for money either through a bond sale, for example, you need to be able to demonstrate that you have good financial planning in place. It will affect the city's bond rating if you're looking for money in the future. And what's happening right now in St. Helena? So right now, the water fund is pulling from reserves for general operations. The wastewater fund has no reserves and has a negative fund balance. Rates have been adjusted by the CPI annually since 2011. In reviewing your rates every three to five years, it's, that's good, but also periodically you want to do what's called a cost of service study. Not only how much money do we need to raise, the rates to achieve the amount of money we need, but are we doing it equitably? Are we meeting some of California's laws? And we're going to talk about that in just a moment, in how we are collecting the money. So the last automatic rate increase was in January of this year. There's no more, not going to be any more increases without some action by council. The city is not following best practices for the reserve amounts in both of the utility funds for current bondholders. And both the water and wastewater utilities have large capital improvement projects that do need to be completed over the next 10 years that have been identified, and Steve will be talking about those. Overarching goals. One, we've talked about it, revenue sufficiency. We've got to adequately fund the water and wastewater systems, operate them, providing clean, safe, reliable water. Meeting regulations and environmental standards to fund the system rehabilitation, to ensure that you are keeping your current assets in good operational order and extending their life as much as you possibly can. To ensure that your existing water sources remain viable, that's extremely important in today's environment. To build a reserve fund for emergencies and potentially for changing regulatory compliance. To ensure an equitable cost allocation, we mentioned, and then to ensure there's compliance with Proposition 218, which is a California-specific law. We're going to talk about the laws governing utility rates, most particularly what is called Prop 218, or Proposition 218. As I said, this is a California-specific law. They are that fees or charges shall not exceed the funds required to provide the service. The utility fund is an enterprise fund, is not looking to make a profit. It just needs to get the revenue to operate safely. That fees and charges shall not be used for any other purpose than for that which it is imposed. That fees and charges shall not exceed the proportional cost of service to each property. And this is the item that really draws the most attention when we're talking about Proposition 218, is how do you demonstrate? How do you show the nexus between how much people are using the system and how they pay for it? And finally, that fees and charges cannot be based on a potential or future use of service. It's a property-related fee. We're determining what the fees should be for ownership property, someone who has paid a connection fee, they have hooked up, the facilities are there and available at their property. How much should they be paying for service? And a little bit on rate implementation. As I said, this affects all properties that have water service currently available to their property. What the city must do in implementing new rates is provide a public hearing notice. And there's certain pieces of information that have to be included in that notice. First of all, what is the amount of the rate? What is the city proposing would be the maximum rates that they could implement? And this is really important. It is a maximum amount. If city council went forward with a rate schedule for the next five years, and in three years' time, Steve gets a big grant for a project, for example. And the revenues have been coming in as you expected, hopefully, and your costs have been about on track. Maybe in one year, you may not have to go to that full amount that you've been authorized under the public hearing. Okay? So it is a maximum amount that is being approved. Then the notice has to state the basis upon which the rate is calculated, why this rate increase is necessary, and it has to list the date, the time, and the location of the public hearing to allow people the opportunity to come and speak at the public hearing, and also to give a protest should they desire to protest the rate increase. So talking about protests, people can give the city a protest. It has to be a written protest. It is one protest per parcel, and the notices are sent to the property owners. City could make a decision if they want to also send it to tenants, they can, but they're not legally required to do so. If you receive a protest for a parcel, and say, for example, the tenant sends in a protest and the property owner sends in a protest, you can only count one of them, not both. And the rate increase cannot be implemented if more than 50% of the property owners protest. So it's a majority protest type of adoption. Okay. Another very important thing in Proposition 218, we talked about that, excuse me, proportional cost of service, is that low-income discounts and subsidies between customer types are prohibited. Now, there are a few exceptions to that. There are ways that you can have subsidies to certain classes, and that is if you fund a subsidy by a discretionary funding source, for example, the general fund. If you have voluntary donations from other customers, or if that subsidy is approved as a special tax, but that would have to be approved by two-thirds of the ratepayers. Currently, the general fund does subsidize some low-income customers in the water fund. Okay. In 2015, there was a landmark case regarding setting of water rates. And this is called the San Juan Capistrano case. So rate payer in the city of San Juan Capistrano challenged the city that their tiered water rate structure did not meet the requirements of Proposition 218, and that, in fact, their tiered water rates were penalties rather than being based on a documented cost to provide service. So the judge, the result of this case was that the judge said, well, the city failed to demonstrate that the tiers correspond to the actual cost of providing service at a given level of usage. Therefore, the rates were not proportional to the cost of service. So since that ruling, there's been a real dilemma for cities and other agencies in setting their rates, because there is a need to send a conservation signal to people. However, it's very difficult to demonstrate what that incremental cost is for more water. If a city had a base source of water, I'll just give a generic type of example here. Say, for example, they got their water from a surface water source, but in the summertime, when there's peak demands, they had to use groundwater wells to supplement their base water. The additional cost of those wells, then, you could determine at what level of usage do we need to switch the wells on? And you could determine what's the incremental cost of that new water source, and you could justify having another tier. But it's become very difficult for most agencies to really demonstrate that. So it's not illegal to have tiers still. It's just difficult to demonstrate that you are truly, truly basing your tier on the additional cost of water. So what a lot of agencies and cities have done is they have switched to a uniform rate under which everybody pays the same per gallon or per unit, in your case, per hundred cubic feet of water that they use. So that's one, that's one way of dealing with this. There are some other ways, too, and we are going to talk about that a little bit further on in the presentation. Okay, I am going to turn this over to Steve to talk about the capital improvement plans.
Thank you, Catherine. As Catherine said, I'm going to talk a little about the CIP, why it's important to the rate study. As Catherine mentioned earlier, the CIP, or I mean, the rates cover the cost to operate the program. So in the run, the utility, there's several components, operations, maintenance, rehab, debt service, and capital improvements. So capital improvements is just one piece of it. In our situation, it's quite a big piece, so I want to spend a little time going over So the city does prepare a CIP five-year planning document every year. So as Catherine was saying, we have rates that it looks, it tries to look at 10 years, actually try and fund five years. Well, the CIP is a five-year planning tool, but it actually gets adopted every year. And we try and keep it current, and so it's continually being adopted. And that way, we can make sure that we're tracking costs in line with the rates and estimates. And our goal for the CIP here at the city is to maintain and And, and our goal for the CIP here at the city is to maintain and improve city infrastructure. The current five-year CIP that was just adopted in July by city council has eighteen point seven million dollars over five years. It's broken into four categories and water, wastewater are two of those four categories. So we use that as a starting point. For the rate study, it gets, it gets programmed in there. And then because the CIP is only a five-year tool and we want to include, try and look for ten years in the rate study. The rate study will include some other projects, different projects, the costs may vary a little bit. But this is where we start. And so I've highlighted a table from the current five-year CIP. And in red there shows the five-year toll for water and wastewater projects alone. So you can see water, wastewater are a significant portion of the infrastructure costs and capital improvement costs for the city over the next five years. Earlier in the presentation, Catherine also talked about balancing multiple objectives and level of service. So for wastewater and water capital needs, our level of service is regulatory compliance and deferred maintenance. That's really all we're looking at now. The city, as, as you folks all know, is very limited in terms of growth. We don't have a lot of growth going on. There are no system expansions included in the CIP. So we're not expanding to new areas of service. It's strictly dealing with complying with new and changing regulations and, and keeping the system maintained, upgraded, capital replacements, deferred maintenance-type activities. It, it's, it's kind of this, the symptom of dealing with a system that's thirty, like Catherine says, thirty to fifty years old. I mean, the wastewater plant was built in the sixties, the water plant was upgraded in the eighties. So we've got some aging infrastructure that we're trying to maintain. This next slide is, illustrates a point that was earlier in the presentation as well. It was mentioned that the water fund is operating with a negative cash flow every year. So this, this shows that you can look at the total revenues for ending six, as of six thirty sixteen, is three point eight million dollars, whereas expenses for that year were five million dollars. So there's operating loss of one point three million dollars. And then the impact of that on the net position, the reserves is shown there as well with the three point five million dollar net position. With actually three million dollars of that is bond funds that are reserved for the Upper York Creek Restoration Project. So those are bond funds the city has in a separate account that at this point, we've programmed for a certain particular capital project. Which leaves the unrestricted net position that we can use for operating costs is five hundred thousand dollars. Which is ten percent of that five million dollar annual expenditure. Which is less than what best practices say we should have in that fund, ten percent. So for the water projects, and actually for wastewater as well, focus on water first, but for both, the capital project, the money we're using for capital projects is money that's been set aside already into a separate capital project fund. So we haven't been pulling, for several years, we have not been pulling from operating net position. We haven't been pulling from rates and setting aside money for, for capital projects. We've been using money that's been set aside several years ago and it's in an account. And when that money is depleted, there'll be no more money for capital projects. Because as you saw, we have a one point three million dollar negative operating cost. So there is no additional money to pull for a new project. So the current project fund balance for water is a million dollars. So what that means, once I spend a million dollars of capital projects, then there'll be no more, I won't be able to build any more projects, will be done. And the current five-year capital project expenditures projected at four point eight million dollars. So that five-year CIP has four point eight million dollars of expenditures listed in it. I don't have a fund balance of a million dollars. So next year, we'll need additional funds from somewhere. We either have to get it from, we'll have to get it from the rates, we'll have to get grants or general fund, something, or we'll just stop building new projects. And I'll show you the list of projects in a minute. This is just a nice picture of where the money is coming from for capital projects. One thing I want to point out, we show quite a big piece there for bonds and grants and unfunded. That's like seventy-five percent more, eighty percent of the, the funding for the CIP. Those are all dedicated or mostly dedicated towards the one project, Upper York Creek Ecosystem Restoration Project. So that's the three million dollars in bonds. There's a one point six million dollars unfunded and there's a million or so in grants. So if you take those out of the picture, you can see the rates, which I'm calling utility in the pie chart. But that means it's rates, it's also reserves in that fund are more like ninety percent of the, of the funding source for capital projects. So the point is, it's, it's, rates have to fund capital projects. It's very difficult to get grants. We do try, we're successful sometimes. And then if you can't get those and you don't have the rates, then you have to bond. And so you're financing the cost of capital projects, which all gets factored into the rate calculation as we move forward. Oops, it jumped on me. So the next, yeah, here we go, the next two slides are the list of projects that are currently in the five-year CIP. And as I said before, this is, was a starting point for the rate study. So as we move forward, these costs may change. We may add new projects or programs that aren't necessarily capital projects. When we do the rates, we'll also look at other program initiatives, aren't necessarily capital improvements. So when we talk about maybe like a GIS system or upgrading meter rate or water meters or things like that. Or annual replacement program. I wouldn't necessarily put those in the five-year CIP. But they are something that we want to do to continue to maintain and operate the system. But they're really outside of what I would call a capital improvement project. The other point I want to point out is that I put the numbers in here, total project costs. This doesn't mean that the rates will fund sixteen point eight million dollars total. As you can see, there's some projects that are to be determined. We don't have a number yet, they're too far out. We haven't done enough planning to know exactly what they're going to cost. These numbers also include prior year's costs, so money that's already been spent. I wanted to show what the total project cost is. So like, for example, I'll pick on Upper York again because it's the top of the list. But six and a half million dollars includes maybe almost a million dollars of prior year's expenditures. And includes the grant funds and includes unfunded and includes the bond funds. So the rate funding will be a little different. And then on top of that, when we look at cash flow, we look at cash flow. We'll have to figure in if some things need to be funded through bonds and we'll have debt service, so we'll go on to that as well. So we can't, it's not as simple as taking the total cost here and dividing it by the number of units we sell to come up with a rate. We have to factor in some other things. And then moving on to wastewater. Again, we're, same thing as water, where we are using existing capital fund balance. A little bit better position here as far as balance goes. The net position is zero right now, which I think I'd go over the next slide. But the capital project expenditures or capital project fund balance that we have set aside outside the reserve is one point one million dollars. Right now, the five-year capital project expenditure is two point two million dollars. I guarantee that's going to change in the next six months as we go through the wastewater upgrade project that's required by our new permit. This is a, we have some planning level estimates in there right now. But as we go through feasibility studies and we go through negotiations with the regional board about what the next upgrade to the plant is, that number will, will go up. I'm sure it will change. So, but right now, we're showing a fiscal year eighteen nineteen is when we run out of money in that set-aside account. We'll need more money. So this illustrates the fact that right now the net position of wastewater is actually negative twenty-seven thousand dollars. So the general fund had to loan some money to wastewater just to, to make expenditures last year. But basically, revenues and expenses are tracking right on. So, but what that means is you have no unrestricted net position. So we have no safety net. If something happens, if heaven forbid, there's some kind of disaster or there's a leak or some major repair that pops up that we didn't plan for, we didn't know about. We'll be struggling to figure out how to pay for that. I mean, there's no net position. It'll be stopping other projects, maybe looking to the general fund. But we, we don't have a safety net if there's something goes wrong. So we don't, it's, it's, it's kind of scary. I don't know else to put it. If something happens, we have, we have no safety net to, to do any, to, to deal with it. Well, like I took, as an example, I was talking to somebody the other day. The, I think it was down in LA County, I think it was LA County Public Works a few years ago, not a few months ago, actually. Had a major sewer leak, so they had a pipe rupture, major sewer leak spilled in the San Monica Bay. And if we had something like that happen, and it happens, I mean, the public works director there said, he's quoted in the papers, saying, hey, this infrastructure is a hundred years old. Things are going to fail, we'll have to fix it and move on. Well, we have infrastructure that's fifty years old and water infrastructure is even older than that. If those things fail and we have to fix it, we have no money to fix it. Another slide showing where the funding is coming from for wastewater capital projects. You can see over ninety percent, roughly ninety percent is from utility rate structure. And then the capital project list. The one I wanted to highlight on there, well, there's two. One is the third one down, wastewater treatment plant upgrades, phase one. These are the projects that are required by the regional board to bring us into compliance with our new permit. So we had a new wastewater permit was issued in February from the regional board. It's part of the normal, normal five-year cycle that they go through with reviewing permits and upgrading permits. And that new permit, as is kind of the norm for the regional board, they ratchet down the requirements and make it more and more stringent. So they're requiring us to discharge wastewater to the river that's treated half as, I don't know how to explain it, but the limits got cut in half. So we have to treat that much more. So like, for example, we had BOD discharge allowance of five hundred, they're cutting it down, I don't think it was seven hundred, cutting it down to three fifty. Something like that. So it's making it twice as difficult basically to meet discharge requirements. So this is a mandated program. They've given us five years to bring the plant into compliance with the new permit. Issued a cease and desist order in, in conjunction with that to force us to do something. So there's not an option for that project. We have to comply with it. Right now, I've got one point four million dollars in there. We're doing a feasibility study now. I just got the draft today from the consultant. And that'll be presented to the board at the end of this month. I think the costs are gonna, are gonna go up on that project. I don't, it's probably will go to five million dollars. Just as we go through these things and do engineering analysis and cost estimates, things can change. So until we get to a capital firm project budget, some of these numbers will change. And, and so the top project I want to highlight too is tertiary treatment. There's been a lot of talk in the community and actually some talk between myself and the regulators at board about going to tertiary treatment and, and treating water to the point where it can be reused beneficially in the community and safe for human contact. We had a cost estimate at one time, the city did, it was upwards of twenty million dollars to do that. I put in there as TBD, I don't think it's scary to put twenty million dollars in there. But if that's where the community wants to go and that's where the regulatory agency wants the community to go, that will have a significant impact on rates. You can see I've got two million dollars, three million dollars program right now. Think about ten times that amount to do recycled water. So that's, I'm going to finish there and hand it back to Jennifer to talk about water agreements.
Thank you, Steve.
I've been through it.
I'm becoming known for my binders. So even have a picture of it. So this binder contains a number of water agreements. Before I had done the, the research, I could not find one location where all the water agreements lived. There were bits and pieces of different notes, either hard files, electronic files. But nothing was centralized in one location. So with the help of Chrissy, her and I did a lot of digging. I have gone through numerous city files, electronic, hard copies, trying to find all the water agreements that I can locate. I've done an initial analysis of the water agreements and I've categorized the agreements into four broad categories. The first one is water that we purchase. So that, an example of that is the NAPA agreements. And really, that's the only one under that agreement. And there's several amendments with that. Fire service agreements, so those agreements are primarily to customers outside of city limits that need to have fire service for building code standards. We also have non-potable water agreements, so either from the lower reservoir or from wells. And then we have potable water agreements. I am going to continue to do a detailed analysis of the historical use of these agreements. I have some information, some historical information, but again, it's never, to my knowledge, been in one location to really be able to compare an overall use of these water agreements. We, the city is, is committed to provide the water per the terms of the agreements. And the terms of the agreements vary depending on type of agreement. For today, I'm really only going to talk about the potable water agreements. At this time, I know of twenty-four agreements. And I say know of because I have seen some records that maybe are incomplete or inconclusive. And so to the best of my knowledge, there's twenty-four water agreements with the research that I've done. The vast majority of these water agreements do base the price on whatever our rate is. And also the majority of these agreements do have penalties if the, the customer uses more than what's designated in the agreement. And I'm just going to shamelessly plug my rebate programs because I do manage the water conservation program. And I want as much information out in the community about the rebate programs. So not technically tied to the rate study, but we are offering numerous rebate programs for water conservation. So just talking a little bit about what the role of the task force is and why we're here today. So we really want to review the methodology of the rate study and get feedback as the rate study team for where, kind of a sense of the community, where we stand. And it really is an opportunity to talk to the public, to invite the public, to educate the task force and the public and to get as much information out into the community before the rates are adopted as possible. Today, we're going to be talking a lot about policy decisions. And we're really looking for more of an informal gauge, you know. Not necessarily a strict vote of I vote for option one or I vote for option two. But really just a sense of what the community kind is feeling about some of these policy decisions and the task force. And it's also to review the rate study before it goes to city council. So the more community outreach and input we can have, I think that's better. Because it allows people to really understand what the rate study is and why we're doing it.
All right, I think before we take the break, I'd like to give the task force an opportunity to ask any of the presenters questions. If you've come up with any questions so far, we'll have further time to do that as we go on after the break. But do any of the task force members up here have questions they'd like to throw at Jennifer, Catherine, or Steve?
I had a question for Steve. And what are the, what are the best management practices for reserves? What numbers are we looking at trying to build up in both the water and wastewater?
I'm going to ask Catherine that question because she's the financial expert here.
Okay. Usually it's set by policy, but the general, the general practice is that you want to have anywhere from six months to one year of operating expenses. Six months to one year of operating expenses available in reserve. Part of that is driven by your sources of revenues and when the revenue comes in, but for for you, because you receive. Monthly revenues, uh six months to one year would be in a good, good situation.
Thank you.
I have one uh question too. In terms of our sources of water, by far the one that costs us the most is the Napa water. And the question I have is whether that uh can be factored in in terms of tiers. Uh does that really provide us with an opportunity to tier? Uh because we do have a very high cost source so that we can move some of that cost to folks that use the most water.
That's a great question, we are gonna talk about that a bit in the next section.
Okay.
Um but the overall picture to me is that the way that the city is conjunctively using. Its different sources of water, I don't believe you can. The six hundred acre feet from Napa, you're paying for regardless of how much it it gets used, so you're using that to the. Maximum amount that you can, because that makes sense financially. And then you're using your groundwater and your surface water according to largely according to what your water year looks like. Um we'll see in a in a graph there that during the drought years, you use a lot less groundwater. Um it in not turns in terms of quantity, but as a as a percentage of your uh use of water sources. So when I look at that, I don't see a good nexus for you to have tiers.
Okay.
Any other questions from the panel?
All right, and what's what length of break uh do you recommend?
I would recommend about ten minutes.
All right, so let's convene at five after ten, reconvene at five after ten.
And there are snacks and coffee in the back.
So we're going to reconvene now um. And go to the water rate study itself. Uh we're going to have um. An overview of the current water rate structure and then go on from there, and as I said earlier. Uh after each of the uh components are discussed, we'll have time for a public comment. So you'll have plenty of opportunity if you have questions or ideas to present. So who's going to begin, Catherine, are you gonna begin with this, thank you.
Okay. Currently, the city, and we're starting with water, just again, just to reiterate that, it's just water we're talking about right now. There is a uh base charge and a use charge, the base charge is a monthly flat fee. That is pa- paid based on the meter size that the account has. The base rate is also called the service charge, I think in the municipal code, it's actually called service charge, so. Uh just those terms may be used interchangeably. And then the use charge is based on the amount of water that the uh account uses. There are two billing tiers for use. Um and it depends on the type of customer. And quantity of water, so the rates are the same in tier one, no matter what customer type you are. And they're the same for tier two, no matter what kind of custom you are. But each customer has a different uh block, if you can think about it in that way, so a certain amount of water that you can use that's. The tier one rate is applied to and and anything above that, you pay than the tier two rate. And there are certain designated landscape irrigation meters that provided they meet certain requirements as specified in code. They can pay a consistent use rate, there is no rate, uh excuse me, no tier applied to those particular accounts. So we're gonna give you an illustration just so that you can uh really understand how this works. For a single family uh home. Tier one is zero through fourteen units of water, that's hundreds of cubic feet. So if you're using between zero and fourteen in a month, all that usage would be charged the tier one rate. If you use more than fifteen hundred cubic feet, then you're gonna be paying. The amount from fifteen cubic hundred cubic feet and over at that higher rate. For multifamily, the first tier is lower. Um and then for non-residential, they also have different blocks based on the size of the meter. So the philosophy or the reasoning behind this and why it was done this way uh in two thousand and eleven rate study. Is that for tier one, you want to try and capture what people need to use for everyday living, indoor water usage essentially. It's running your dishwashers, using all the plumbing fixtures, drinking water. Um plus some allowance for uh trees, shrubs outside, things that are not. Not using a a lot of water, um but that you could be able to keep a yard um without having a huge lawn. Uh looking pretty essentially, and then tier two is to capture that water use that is then used. Um say you have a lawn, it's considered really non-essential water use. And if you want it, then you pay a higher rate for it. So that's why you see multifamily um units have a lower uh block for block one. Is that when you look at the consumption data on a per unit basis for a multifamily unit. They typically use less water um indoors and. And they tend to have dedicated irrigation meters too for their outdoor water usage. And the way that the blocks were set for non-residential, uh the the attempt was to capture about two thirds of the water being. Used would be charged in tier one and about one third in in tier two. And so at that time, this is pre the San Juan Capistrano. This is a very ro- this was considered to be a very robust way of setting rates. So um certainly currently has a water rate structure that is very typical in California. Um and it's a rate structure that frankly would be supported by Jerry Brown and those in at the state. Um the San Juan Capistrano case was considered quite a blow. Uh in terms of being able to send a conservation uh price signal to customers and um. So nothing out of the ordinary, now. The way that the current tiers are set does mean that there is a the price differential between your tier one and tier two. Currently does not have a solid nexus, when I went through the two thousand and eleven rate study. I could, it it's it shows that the price points were. Were uh made based on um having something in between a residential and a non-residential usage rate at the time. And I think that that actually harks back to the two thousand and four rate study. Um so again. Common practice at the time, I've done many rate studies myself where I've done exactly the same thing. So it used to be that, uh and it's in the American Waterworks Association manual. You try to set the the tier differential to send the conservation signal. You try and base it off of co- additional costs, um but oftentimes, it's just set on a differential of say twenty percent. But since the San Juan Capistrano case, that is not something that can be supported anymore. Okay. Given that background. Given that background with San Juan Capistrano. The options for this uh water rate study, I think, uh are laid out in the slide, so one is. That you eliminate the tiers and you go to a uniform rate structure, again, everybody pays. The same for every unit of water that they use, whether they are a landscape customer, non-residential customer, residential customer. It's essentially what you have right now, it's a base charge and a use charge, but there's no tier, no blocks, okay? Another alternative is. To indicate to people, again, we're trying to, we're trying to signal the value of the service that they're receiving. You want your customers to understand. That when they use water in the peak months, and actually you have a six month stretch, you don't just, you don't have um. You don't have a real s- spike in the summer like a lot of uh. A lot of the Central Valley communities have a real spike between about June and September. Yours goes up noticeably in May and it's about a six month period, so you have what I would call an on-peak, off-peak. Type of usage pattern, but it's a six month, six month type of ratio instead of what I usually see is more like an eight month, four month type ratio. So you want to, you want to signal the value of the service. Um in some preliminary work that we've already done in the um model. What we see is that the cost to provide water per unit of water is more expensive during those six months. Um uh of the on-peak, which is that May through October timeframe. So I I think that there would be, and again, we need to really go through these numbers in 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 better detail and analysis. I think there would be uh the option to have what's called a seasonal rate structure. Which means that everybody pays a lower. Co- uh a lower price per unit of water during the off-peak months and a higher unit cost per unit of water in the on-peak months. Um provided it is a very robust analysis and clearly demonstrates. That the cost to provide the water during that six month time period truly is higher than it is in the off-peak. Um so again, they would still pay a base charge based on the meter size, but then they would pay a seasonal use charge rather than a uniform use charge. Okay. Um in this presentation, we're not gonna go into numbers. Um we have done some of the rate modeling, um it's in a preliminary stage at this point, it's certainly not ready for. Sharing any types of um results, but even before getting to that stage, we're really looking for some input on some decisions. Um and then moving forward with then what to take to council or this committee again, however it's determined that this um moves forward in the next steps. The methodology for the rate study, um again, it's pretty it's pretty clear cut, it's that revenue requirement. First, how are you going to collect the revenue requirement? And then you calculate the rates, now in order for us to do that and come back with any kinds of results, we need some input. Um from the community and from this committee in particular. So what we're gonna do next in the presentation is we're gonna talk about some specific items that we're looking for some guidance on.
Catherine, before you go on, I just wanted to give the task force an opportunity to ask any questions about your summary of the rate. Current rate structure, any clarification needed or from any of you?
I have a question, Jack. I I I think I know the answer, but are landscape users using the same water as drinking? So that we don't have a separate pond of dirty or gray water that were. Is available for landscapes, so they're getting the same drinking water.
Yep, it's all treated potable water.
Then I think we have another question here, oh, the meter size, I. Can can you help me understand what, I could see a pipe size because a bigger pipe, I'm I'm a bigger customer, but is the meter size he uh tied to the pipe size or?
Yeah, it's the same concept, so it's the amount of water that can come through the meter and we can use either a safe operating flow or an average flow. But same idea, it's how much water can you get through the meter, so bigger meter you can get.
Bigger meter, bigger pipe.
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any other?
I just have one question which I think has been answered, but just to clarify, so the San Juan Capistrano ruling, does that by. By that case ruling, does it necessarily eliminate the possibility of any sort of tiered structure or block structure outside?
Oh, could you speak into the mic, sorry to interrupt, could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Usually I can project across the room, uh but basically just the idea of that case uh necess- it really eliminates. Any other option for a rate structure outside of the scenario one and two that you've listed. And basically, in that context, only the seasonal rate structure gives you the latitude to even have another tier.
Yes.
Which is consistent across the board.
That's correct, um okay, so it is not eliminated. It is a question of risk tolerance and how and your city attorney's opinion should be taken into account. Um there are some cities that have decided that. They feel they can defend their rates and their tiered structures as they are and they feel very comfortable about that. And they've just decided that they're gonna stick with what they have. Um and see what happens in future case law. Um I'm giving you my opinion based on my review of the last rate study solely. And I would say you should also seek the opinion of your city attorney. Um when I hope, when I read through your last rate study, the way it's written, the wording says. That the use charge was based on the midpoint of the residential and the non-residential uh use rates. And to me, that is not a good enough nexus to say that at a certain level of usage, you're now bringing on another water source. And this is the incremental cost associated with that water source. If you wanted to continue with some kind of tiered system pricing. Um I think it would be very challenging. Because of the way you use water sources in the city. And it's really, you have a beautiful system, you have a conjunctive use system, you can draw from. You can get your treated water from the city of Napa, you have groundwater and you have surface water and. Uh you're very fortunate in having those different sources of water, and as a result of that. The city y- uses all those sources uh in different months in different amounts. It's not, there's no consistent pattern. Aside from the fact you try and use that Napa water as much as you possibly can because you're paying uh essentially a flat rate for that six hundred acre feet. What you're trying to do is balance long-term management of your water resources. So you want to conserve your aquifer as much as possible, especially in a drought year or a non-normal year. Um and use your surface water supplies in those years when when you can and you might flip-flop it in another year. Um you might have a cause to want to use your groundwater more than your surface water in one particular year. So I think it becomes very difficult to to set the rates with with a tiered structure. I'm not saying it can't be done, I just think it becomes very challenging to do that.
Thank you.
That's another question on the Capistrano case, I noticed it was twenty fifteen, is that being appealed or is that pretty much settled law at this point and?
No, they uh city came to a settlement and they didn't want to take it to an appeal.
My belief is that the California Supreme Court denied review.
That is true too, yeah.
All right. All right, please continue, Catherine, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna start out with this uh standby rate. Currently, the city has a municipal code allowing any customer to go on what's called standby. That means water is turned off and the customer is charged two dollars and fifty cents a month only. They do not pay the base rate, they do not pay a use rate, there's no water being used, but. All they're being charged is two dollars and fifty cents a month, okay? There is no water used by the property, however, the utility system still requires. Revenues to operate, okay? The intent of having a service charge or a base use charge is to try and capture the co- fixed costs of the system. So that even if people don't use as much water as you might expect, you can still at least cover those base costs. You've you've got to pay, you've got to have a water treatment plant operator. You gotta have supervisors, you gotta have a man in the field, you gotta have someone fixing leaks. Base core costs that you just, you cannot just shed because there's less people using wat- less water's being used in the system. So that that is the intent. So like when I say that, fixed costs of the system are captured in the base charges. So in effect. In effect, those standby customers are getting a subsidy. And a subsidy is not allowed under proposition two eighteen. Okay, there is another case law that upholds this concept that whether or not you receive service at the property. The base charge is a. the base charge is a fee as defined under Proposition 218. And this is in the Pollan versus Brook Trail CSD 2013 case, where the judge determined that whether the service is active or inactive, whether or not the property owner uses the service, it is a property-related fee, the service is available to the customer should they choose to use it. Therefore, the city has every right to charge that base fee every month regardless whether or not the customer uses the service. Okay, so what we're looking for some input on today is whether to keep the municipal, municipal code the same. Now, if you did that, going back to those earlier slides from this morning, you would need to create some way to fund that subsidy. Currently, there's no way of funding it, the, they, those customers pay $2.50 a month and that subsidy that's been provided to those customers is not funded. So if you wanted to keep a standby rate like it is right now, you would have to find some funding mechanism to do that. Another option is you eliminate the $2.50 standby charge and everybody pays the base rate regardless of whether or not they actually use the service in any month. If you did that, you would also, uh, this is kind of a subset, it's not an option, but I would recommend that you did have a fee to turn on and off water for people who want to leave. It's not uncommon in communities where I work where you have snowbirds, you have people that go away for a certain period of time, that they need, uh, public works to come out, turn their service on or off, and they should be paying a fee for that. So, uh, it's my understanding that currently there is no fee associated with that service. So that's, like I said, it's not really an option, that's a subset. But the options are keep the standby rate, find a way to pay for that subsidy, or just have everybody pay the base rate whether or not they use it. So I think I turn it back to the chairman.
All right, thank you. Um, let's have some comment from the panel first and then we'll have an opportunity for public comment. This sounds a little bit like a no-brainer to me that, uh, if you retain a consultant or a lawyer, you're paying, say, a monthly fee for having access to that service. And this would seem to be a similar parallel, I think if you, uh, if you're gone for three months in the winter, you probably still get a bill from PG&E and probably for the, from the phone company if you have a landline.
Garbage.
Garbage, yeah, all of that. So that's my off-the-top-of-my-head opinion. Um, let's start with you, Wayne, since I'm looking at you.
Uh, hello, I would like to know if there's any data on what percentage of St. Helena customers utilize a standby rate? Do we know what that is? Twenty percent? Oh, twenty cus, twenty customers? Oh, yeah, then I, I would agree with you.
Then, question I have is this i, item three, if I'm paying a base rate, which would be option two, why would I need to turn the water on and off? If I'm not there and I'm not using it, who cares? What, why would that even be applicable?
We have found several people wanna turn off their water because they're not there and in case of a leak or something like that happen, so, you know, if you're not there for three months, it protects your property.
Then what is the base rate today? Is it a number that we know? Is it 20 bucks, 100 bucks or?
Uh, $27.52, I believe.
Jen might know it off the top of her head.
That's a standard residential?
Yeah, so it's, just for everyone, it's $27.52 for a five-eighth inch meter, which is a typical residential meter.
Well, then I concur with Jack, I like option two personally, yeah. It affects 20 people, it's.
Right, it's, it's so minimal, yeah.
And they could still turn off their service, they can pay the base rate but pay a fee to turn off the service for protection against leaks.
Absolutely, it would be our recommendation that people are allowed to turn on and off water via city staff to protect the infrastructure in ca, in cases where they are not gonna be at the location or, um, we do have a number of wells in the city. I think there's five or 700 properties with wells. So a lot of residential properties do have the option of having a well. Some people do want to utilize that.
Now, it, it just occurred to me, I can turn off my own water at the, um, upstream from the meter, why does the city have to be involved with that? I could just.
If you, it, we're recommending if you want it turned off at the meter and it's the same conversation, there is a pipe from the meter to your house and that can fail, so it is, it would be up to the property owner if they would want it turned off at the meter. But that would definitely be an option.
Okay. Alan or Peter, do you have any comments?
Can we?
I would suggest that you open the public hearing. As council members, at the end of the day, we are going to vote on this, so I think.
All right, so you're mainly here to listen.
Kind of back to our ad hoc, uh, revenue restrictions. Uh, I had one question. With, with the new regulations for residential, um, building where we have fire protection inside the house, wouldn't that, um, preclude the residents from being able to actually turn off their water?
Correct. If there is fire service, we will not turn off water.
Yeah, okay. So I think all new residences have to have a fire suppression system.
Correct.
Alan, any questions from you?
No, I thought, uh, Mr. Armstrong, uh, insightfully asked the wonderful question as to how many people would be affected and it seems extremely minor to me.
All right, well, we'll open the public, uh, here, uh, public forum for this particular component. Public forum is an opportunity for the public to respond to the information presented during the meeting and to directly address the task force. Any person addressing the task force should provide his or her name and address and limit comments to the time determined by the task force chair. The recommendation is three minutes, we'll start with that, uh, which I think with the size of this, uh, body, the, that would work well. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the committee, meaning the task force, may not engage in substantive discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. However, we may discuss items that are on the agenda that I think all of you have, uh, in your hands at this moment. Does anyone want to come forward with a comment? Jeff?
Morning, uh, Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner, I just wanna clarify, will there be time for public comment of an overarching nature? I've got some larger comments on the, the overall situation, not on this specific item, will I be able to, uh, bring those up at some point?
I'll ask staff or the council members to answer that question.
It would be my recommendation that we would keep an open public forum at the end.
At the end, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's proceed to the, um, surcharge component.
There are several geographical areas within the city's water system. Many of these small geographical areas do require, um, s, specific assets to deliver water in those areas. So tanks and pump stations in particular. Currently, only Meadowwood is being charged a surcharge for this geographical, um, issue. So surcharges are intended to cover the cost specific to those facilities in that geographic area. The only difference between Meadowwood and other pumping zones in the city is that the Meadowwood customers are outside of the city limits. There are other pumping stations inside city limits that also benefit specific customers. However, those areas are not paying a surcharge, so. Question is, should the, should there be a continuation of a Meadowwood surcharge? Which would be calculated on the actual cost to operate and maintain those facilities that are specific to the Meadowwood area? Should Meadowwood pumping costs, surcharges be eliminated and all those costs be integrated into one water system? So there would be no price differential for Meadowwood, um, compared with the rest of the city customers? Or should other geographical areas be paying a surcharge for their specific facilities? From an operations and billing point of view, um, it's always administratively easier and can be justified that you would have everybody paying for costs. It's one water system. Everybody is benefiting from the management of one water system. However, uh, customers who are outside of the city, if there is a specific cost associated with delivering that water to that area, that is a reasonable, it is a reasonable thing to have a surcharge for that service. It just has to be well documented, that, what the costs are and, um, a very clear nexus demonstrated. I think that's the question.
Any questions or comments on that one?
I've got one. So if, if we show a nexus with, say, Meadowwood, would we have to, I guess, invert inversely? Show that we don't have that nexus with the other geographical areas or just justify the one, um, area for a different rate?
I think because they are outside of the city, you would be able to show that there is a clear cost for providing that service out of the city limits. And it requires these certain facilities in order to do that. No, I don't think you would need to go back and show, um, a nexus or demonstrate in the report why you're not doing that for the other areas because they're all within the city, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, though, they are all within the city's, um, limits.
So I thought we had customers that are on the south end of, outside the city limits.
Right, we, we do have customers that are outside the city limits, both south and north and east, as is Meadowwood. In this particular case, so Meadowwood is the only one that has these specific facilities that have been identified as special facilities just for them, which is a pumping station and tanks. So the other people that are outside the city limits, they don't have special pumps just for them or special tanks just for them.
Oh, okay.
That's the difference.
Uh, uh, in looking at the last rate study, I would, it looks to me that the only costs that were included in the surcharge was the cost of the pumping station.
But we do have a CIP of a new tank.
Exactly.
That's fairly substantial.
Yes, so if you're truly, if you're truly allocating the costs for that particular area, you should really be including the costs for the tanks. And that should include not just the CIP, it should include system, collecting for system rehabilitation in their surcharge as well. So, um, I, it would be my guess, and we've not looked at this, we've not done any numbers, but my guess would be then that the Meadowwood surcharge would go up from where it is now.
Did you say that there are geographical areas within the city limits that are?
Yes.
All right, could you give an example or two of those?
Sure, the, I, my understa, my understanding is three, and one is Meadowwood. The two within the city are, uh, there's a Spring Mountain Road pump station that feeds the houses up off Bieber Road above Lower Reservoir. And then, uh, there's the Palmer Drive pump station, we call it, it's just the Palmer Drive area that boosts pressures down there.
All right, any comment from the two of you? All right, Chuck?
When you refer to Meadowwood, are you referring to the resort and the homes up in that area or just the resort?
It's both, it's Meadowwood complex and the homes around it.
Okay, and then secondly, part of this, it's water and wastewater. So I, I understand we provide water to Meadowwood, are we also providing the wastewater treatment for Meadowwood?
No.
Okay, okay. Um, then my other question was examples of, and you already asked that, so, um, those are my questions.
Wayne?
I have the same, actually I have the same question.
All right. All right, so it seems that the possibility here would be to further tailor the charges according to our costs, the city's cost, by, uh, more specifically adapting the rates to the actual usage and the difficulty represented by additional pumping and so forth and getting the water to the user. So there, we have an opportunity, the city has an opportunity to more specifically attach the rates to the actual cost to deliver by changing this particular component.
For the costs that are associated specifically with those facilities, that's the pumping station and the tanks. It would include electrical costs of the pumping station, it would include repair and maintenance of the station and the tanks and making sure that there's, uh, also money in that surcharge to account for rehabilitation of those facilities when they reach the end of their useful life.
So is there any practical or administrative difference between how we treat the Meadowwood area versus these other geographic areas within the city limits? Why, why would there be any difference other than, um, maybe the tax rate, uh, that they pay into the general fund?
Uh, no, the only difference really is that they're outside of city limits and the city has extended the service specifically for that area, but in order to do so, it had to build facilities to get the water out there. So you either view it, you either view it that way, it's a, it's sort of a capsule, just outside of the city and you've built the facilities and you're serving it, but they, they need to pay for that additional cost. Or you view it as we're all one water system, whether you're inside or outside of the city, regardless, we still have the same crew members, they'll go check your tank, they'll go check this tank over here, that tank over there. Um, it's all, it's all one system, it's, it's a philosophy, you're a policy type of decision, really.
I've got another question as well, Jack. All right, Chuck has another question.
Would, would a potential surcharge apply to the base charge or the base charge and usage?
Right now, the way it's structured is there is a base charge and there is a usage charge. Now, that could be modified, it could be changed so that you could have, um, there's various ways you could do it. You, you could continue with a base charge and some kind of variable charge. You could continue with a base charge and somehow passing through electric costs separately.
We're talking surcharge, right?
Surcharge, surcharge. They already, they pay the same rates as everyone else, but then they also pay the surcharge on top.
And that, that surcharge applies to the base rate and their usage, so it's a percentage or something?
No, no, so they would pay, they would pay the regular rates everyone else pays based on base and use. And then they pay a surcharge that's a base amount. And then depending on how much water is used for that whole area, not just the complex, but the homes as well. Um, and right now, it's quite, uh, they had, there's various bands, so if, if it's between zero and hundred, or 1,200 cubic feet, they pay so much per hundred cubic feet. And if it's more water used, they use less per hundred cubic feet. So I think that the current structure of the surcharge also needs to be reviewed. If that's the direction that we receive to keep some kind of a surcharge, I think it, it does necessitate a full review of how that surcharge is calculated and making sure that all the costs are really in there because it's my, my, I, I have to say it's just a hunch at this point. But just in looking at the last rate study, it looks like only the pumping station costs were included. And if you are really going down that path of, this is a separate, essentially a separate service area, then you need to include everything in there, it's tanks as well.
So could you give, let, let's say someone on Palmer Drive is paying $200 a month now. If we did add them into the surcharge, are we talking $400 a month, $203? I mean, to me, it's kind of, it depends, it's sort of my, my feedback, is I don't know how big the impact would be.
I can't, I can't tell you today what the impact is.
We don't know?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is it correct to say that at this point, St. Helena is not collecting enough, uh, fee or base rate funds to cover its costs in operating the water system?
You're talking about the whole system?
The whole. The whole system, yeah. Is that a yes?
That's a definite yes.
So it seems to me this is another opportunity for us to try to, to capture all of our expenses. And that's in other areas of the city, not just the water and wastewater component. We're trying to make our fees and other charges realistic in, in balance with what we're actually spending. We can't be, we can't continue to operate on a deficit. So this looks like a good opportunity to further attach reality to our, our fee structure. And I think it certainly deserves further discussion.
Mr. Stewart, if I could step into a second just to tailor up what you were saying there. Is that, I want to be clear, the rate studies being set up to cover the full costs of operating the system, that's what we're gonna do, that's our goal. The issue here is whether or not we should treat specific areas of the city differently. That's really, or not even the city. Because as Vice Mayor White said, it's, we have customers outside the city limits besides Meadowwood. So it's the whole system. We're gonna, do you wanna parse out areas of the system and treat them differently in other areas? Or we wanna integrate those costs over the whole system? And that's what we're looking for direction on.
So it's a, you know, it's a policy decision, it's an equity question. This might be a good one to open up a comment for. Is there anyone?
Well, I, I think so, some comments still from the panel, I think. Yeah, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I had an aside, a question as an aside, just generally I realize that the whole question this has to do with the costs of the aging infrastructure and various other CIP that are upcoming. But I wanted to know, do we have some general idea as to where our rate structure falls within the greater Bay area? Are we, are we in line at all with surrounding communities? Do we have any sense of that?
We do, yes. And that would have been a nice thing to show you today. I didn't think of that. Uh, yes, currently St. Helena is about in the middle of the range. Rachel's out. Mid to low. For water or for wastewater? Okay. So we did look at it where we added the water and the wastewater and we compared it combined. Because really, you're paying one utility bill and it has both on there. So mid to low range in this area.
Even after the last increase?
Yes.
Do we still fall in that category?
Yes.
That's, that's useful information, thank you.
Jack, do you want us to, to give input or wait for public input before we weigh in on?
Why don't we go ahead?
Okay.
And give our input.
Well, and just one additional piece of information. It, just to think about with the surcharges is the additional staff time too that would be needed to actually do the calculations to correctly charge the geographical area. So just another thought.
But that's a cost that can, an administrative cost that can be built into the rate, right?
Yes. It just means, for example, that Steve's crew would have to log their time, that they specifically go out to the Meadowwood area, make sure. So it just, it means there's, it needs to be a better tracking system internally at the city. It's very doable, it can be set up. It's just something to be aware of, that it would take some additional work to make sure that you're really capturing the costs correctly.
Right.
If the surcharge is happening already with Meadowwood, is it just quantifying the additional time and staff hours to give some better definition for what that sur, the, what the surcharge is?
Yes, better definition, possibly a change in how that surcharge is structured. I don't really know why it's set up the way it is with the use charge having a declining rate, the more you're using, the less. I can understand the concept behind it, but there's a lot of bans in, in the consumption. And I don't, I, I think you could have something simpler than that.
Just, just to interrupt, Task Force members, if you could make sure that your microphone is on when you're speaking and speaking into the mic.
Sorry.
And we're also speaking to people who might not be here but be watching it or watching the recording.
No problem.
I did have another question, please. This is again, something of an aside, but from a historical perspective, do we know how long the additional pumping stations that are within the city limits, for example Palmer, have existed? Has, have they, has the development necessitated that additional infrastructure in order to get water to those customers?
I do not know when those pump stations were constructed relative to each other.
Okay. But I would say probably, like Meadowwood, an, an argument can be made that at some juncture, they will have to be updated if not replaced.
That, that is true. Actually, one of the other projects in the CIP right now is to upgrade both of those. So we have a project right now in design that we're gonna finish design and because of the funding situation, we're gonna finish design and put on hold. But it actually combines the two pumping stations into one and upgrades and provides additional fire flow and, and general improvement. So yes.
Thank you.
Well, I've got a comment. I, my comment would be if we're already charging the surcharge at Meadowwood, I, I would not be, my input would not be to change that and absorb that. I don't think Meadowwood is very conscious about conservation. And this certainly, if we just took that away, they'd be even less conscious. So I would, my input would be, let's keep that in there. And for the third item, I would have a hard time weighing in until I had some ideas to what the impact on, say, a resident would be. If it, if my rate would go up three percent, okay, I would get that. But if it would go up thirty-two percent, I would think maybe it's better to spread it out over the city and not penalize a street because of where they happen to be. So I don't think I could comment on three until I had some better idea as to how, how much would it impact so, some of these other in, in-city geographical areas.
Yeah. So that's a really, really good point. I see that in other places where they do have, say, a lift station specific to one zone. But they only have twenty houses in that zone and they made a decision that that would be punitive to the people because they're, just they're living there, they're still part of the city water system. Why should they have a different charge? So to your point, it's a good point.
All right, if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this particular point, I will open the public comment period.
Jeff Ellsworth, fourteen thirty-four, Sylvaner. One of the things that's come up, knowing that we provide water to customers outside of city limits, is that as I work on county issues, it's clear that a, a percentage of county, of businesses in the county, wine, wine-related businesses included, are out of compliance with their use permits. So if we're, I think that if we're providing water to the businesses outside of the city, that we have the right to provide water to businesses that are in compliance with their permit. In a sense, if, if we're providing the resource for a business to exceed their permit, thereby creating impacts to us, I think we have the right to be part of a conversation with them. And perhaps there's a leverage point in there so that we're making sure that our citizens and our water resources are protected and that we're not providing water beyond the level that is permitted. So as we look at the geographical areas that are outside of the town, I think that's a question we, we should ask. And we should be interfacing with the county to make sure that, that we're providing water to those that are, are using it within their permitted level. And if they're not, we, you know, we get into that conversation and see if there's some leverage points in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else?
I'm Greg Reynolds from Vineyard Valley. This is just a sidebar, but when we talk about wastewater that Steve mentioned earlier, and you talk about Meadowwood's capacity, I'm wondering if any of these facilities that you support on the water side have the ability to treat wastewater that could somehow assist the city? If there's a way to network wastewater out to that environment and bring it back, et cetera? I don't know if some of the new hotels going in or a place like Meadowwood would have that ability to help support the city in treating wastewater? Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
My name's Tom Belt. I live at fifteen twenty Hillview Place.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Tom Belt, B E L T. I live at fifteen twenty Hillview Place. First of all, I wanted to say this is very enlightening. I, I really, I, I've been kinda keeping an eye on the water rates in this community for a long time. And it's very interesting and I applaud this, this city in taking the final steps to look at this so carefully. And the, I have one general question I'd like just to ask because I've, I, I don't know the answer to that. The water quote enterprise that exists in the city of St. Helena, is there any ownership in the water enterprise? Does the, does the city own that? Does the, the water users who pay for it use it? Or is it's, can I, can I ask that question first?
Sure. It's a city facility. It's owned by the city.
It's owned by the city.
It's just separately accounted for and its own funding.
Okay. The, the, the second question is in regards to this particular issue, as a, as a citizen in St. Helena and paying my, my water bills, I feel a little uncomfortable about having to subsidize any residents in the city that are costing the delivery more to them than to me. I would prefer that, if we're looking at this this closely, that if you're living on a house on top of Bieber Road, which is, I don't know, maybe three hundred feet above where I live and it's costing more money to pump the water to them, it seems like they should have to pay for that and I shouldn't have to subsidize it. Nor should any of the other people who are paying water bills have to subsidize it. It's just my opinion. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belt. Anyone else? All right, let's continue.
Maybe one further comment before you go. And this is really a more general comment. Back in the two thousand and eleven rate study, there was a statement on page two to the effect that within a year, a, a, a city would return to the council with this, with, with recommendation as to whether we should have a, a different rate structure or a higher rate structure outside city limits than inside city limits. Just a more general issue. That did not happen. Clearly, it has to be supported by appropriate records. But it would seem to me that in connection with this discussion of inside, outside the city, it might be appropriate for the current study to take a look at that issue more generally to see whether we can, as many cities do, charge more for outside city limit customers than inside. And the basic rationale being that, that our facilities are inside city limits and it takes more time and effort to service the facilities outside city limits. And there's a cost differential.
That can be done. I, I understand that there did used to be a differential between inside and outside.
There was.
And that was removed. And at the time, the only documentation I found on that was that outside city customers were charged a hundred and fifteen percent of what inside city customers were charged. So if, if there was any difference, please let me know. That's what I read in the, I think it was the two thousand and four study.
Right.
So, and, and there was some reference to the fact that the property taxes were, had caused a differential. I don't, so I don't know the history quite of how that differential was determined first. And I, I don't know what were the, what was the thinking behind removing that differential when it was removed. Uh, it's a good question. I think that to, to look at that and see if there's really a cost differential, to be frank, it's, I think it's quite a hard thing to do. I'm not saying it can't be done. It would require, I think, quite a bit of staff effort to help me to do that because I would need them to help me determine really what's the difference in serving those customers. And then we'd need to look back on the law and, and what that says too. And I think it would be helpful, again, to have an attorney's opinion on that. So if that is a direction that the rate study team receives, I think we, certainly we can look into that. Just know that it's not as simple as it sounds.
Right.
If, if I remember right, we eliminated the differential between outside and inside because of, well, it was a determination by the city attorney that it was illegal to charge a different rate unless we could show the nexus. And staff at that time felt that, that that was pretty impossible to show that there was that much of a nexus between delivery of inside the city limits and outside the city limits, except for the Meadowwood example, to where we actually had a different delivery system and, and a different storage system. So that's my recollection back in the, when we did the two thousand and eleven rate study.
Yeah, it seems, it seems to me that he's revising, revi- reviving a recollection to me that, that the city wasn't set up with the appropriate record keeping at that point in time. It's not that you can't do it, but it does require appropriate record keeping so that you can estimate appropriately the difference in cost.
Precisely.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to item four. Well, we, we, can you hold it for the next time? We, we wanna move. I'm hoping to have this meeting adjourned at noon, which is what was published. So I wanna make sure we are able to get through this. We'll, we'll have an opportunity at the very end of the meeting to make comments about any of these issues that come up. So let's, let's go on.
If I could ask the task force before we move on, if you could just clarify, I heard a lot. And so if you could just briefly clarify, if you can go back one slide, maybe some guidance on these options? Because I've, I've heard a, a lot of different opinions and just trying to get clarification.
There were different opinions, so I guess you could just list them, starting with Chuck. Why don't you?
Well, I'm in favor of continuing the Meadowwood surcharge. And item three, I think we would need some basis to understand the impact on these small streets. I, I agree with the public comment that we shouldn't be subsidizing, but I don't know the, the specter there. So until I had that information. So I would ask maybe for some example to say a user on Palmer whose rates would go up X percent. Then I would be better equipped to provide feedback on item three.
I would agree with that as well. And I would just add that regarding the Meadowwood surcharge, I would certainly support looking further into calculating actual costs based on the previous conversation in order to make that a more accurate number that they are paying.
And I'm in favor of tailoring the, the rates so that there isn't a huge differential between so-called subsidized customers and regular customers. But I think it needs to be a significant difference to justify the additional staff time and administrative burden.
Thank you. Okay. One of the key steps in doing the rate study is conducting what's called a functional cost allocation. And what it does, it's an exercise that looks at all the different expenditures of the system. And it categorizes it into, is this a cost that's associated with a, with a customer service? Is it associated with the ability to ha, to service customers? In other words, is it associated with capacity of the system? Or is it something that's associated with a cost that's very dependent on how much water is actually being used? And by doing this functional cost allocation, that is how we can determine what would be an appropriate amount of your revenue requirement that you recover in the base rates versus the use charges. Currently, thirty percent of your water revenue comes from the base rate and seventy percent of water revenue comes from use charges. We have conducted an initial functional cost allocation analysis. And you could support shifting up to having a seventy percent cost recovery in the base rate and thirty percent in the use rates. Now, having more of your cost recovery come out of the base rate is a benefit to the city in that it makes it less vulnerable to how much water is actually being used. So if you have a drought, for example, people are cutting back, your revenues are not gonna be impacted as much. And it also provides the benefit of doing projections, revenue projections, if you know that you're gonna have a guaranteed amount each month. However, there is, there is a downside to shifting more into the base rate. And that is that people who are on a fixed income or a low income are then paying more each month for the service whether or not they use the water. And there needs to be a, a balance between how much you put in the base rate because you really do want it to reflect your cost structure. But you also want to be sure that you are addressing affordability to the extent that you can. you are addressing affordability to the extent that you can. Um, so, one idea would be that you gradually shift the amount that you collect in the base rate, so you increase the amount that's collected in the base rate over time, so there would be no sudden shift. Um, and you would go, for example, from thirty percent being collected in the base rate to fifty percent being collected in the base rate. I actually would not recommend that you go to seventy percent being in the base rate, because you know that people are still going to use some water. It's not like they're just going to stop using water. So you know you're going to be collecting some revenue from the use charges, but if you collected more in the base rate, it would give this, the city a more stable revenue source. Okay? So, the, the options that we've outlined with this, you could keep collecting thirty percent of revenues from the base rate and seventy percent from the use charges, or make a gradual change so that more revenue is collected in the base rate. And by gradual, I'm talking about one and a half percent each year. So you would go from thirty percent to thirty-one and a half percent or thirty-two percent, um, the next year. So, I'd, no more than about a two percent shift in any one year. Um, but it just provides a little bit more revenue stability for the city.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Is the, w- w- we know what the revenue is, thirty, seventy. What is the actual cost? Is it seventy, thirty? Is the actual cost to support a residence or a user, seventy percent is fixed and thirty percent of the cost, so that's why you inverted those numbers?
Correct. When you do the functional cost allocation, about, about thirty, sorry, excuse me, about seventy percent of it is a fixed cost. Fixed cost is a little bit of a different term than when you're thinking assets and accounting terms. Um, fixed doesn't necessarily mean that it's a, an o- an, an object. It's, it's more, it's a little bit looser than that. It's, it, and, and there is definitely some judgment call in doing that functional cost allocation. One city might say, oh, the reservoir, you know, that's definitely fixed, so, uh, fixed cost, and then other places may say, well, we would say it's fifty percent fixed and fifty percent used because we only use a portion of it if people actually using the water. So, it's not a clear cut, it's not a black and white type of cost ca- uh, categorization. But based on my initial categorization, I, I think you could support saying up to seventy percent if yours are fixed costs, and that is a very common, um, number that I see. So, um, certainly not out of the realm. Very common.
That's my only question, Jack. I have input, but I'll wait until maybe all the questions are.
Peter, do you have a question?
No, I don't think so.
Alan?
No.
All right. Is it possible, I, is it possible if the base rate were the seventy percent, that certain users would be actually paying more than what it actually costs to deliver them water? And would that put us in violation of the new interpretation of the law or the new law?
Uh, no, it wouldn't, because you would have demonstrated through the tables that are in the study, this functional cost allocation, how, and it's quite a detailed table, it's about three pages long usually, and it shows how you've categorized things. Now, someone could always challenge you and say, we feel like this cost should be categorized differently. That certainly could happen. And like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend you go to the full seventy percent for a couple of reasons. One being that there is room for ambiguity on different cost items, and another being that I just, I think that that would really hit some of your, um, lower income customers or fixed income customers. Um, and they, they might go from a lower bill to all of a sudden having a, a much higher bill because of putting so much into the base rate.
And as to your recommendation to limit yearly increases to one and a half percent, do we really get anywhere if we're going up so slowly?
You do. You, you get somewhere. Um, I think, yeah, you do. Um, if you try and do more than that, the way the math works in the model is you can end up with the base rate going up a lot and, and the use rate actually decreasing, which doesn't really make sense intuitively to people, um, and it's not something I would ever recommend that you do.
You could probably show us a graph that indicated that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I could do that. Um, so, going back to some best practices, uh, the California Urban Water Conservation Council, they came out with best practices for water rate structures, and one of those was, and it's quoted in your two thousand and eleven study, one of those is to have your base rates collecting thirty percent and your use rates collecting seventy percent. But in recent years, and in particular in light of the drought, the, the, the thinking on that has really changed, because some utilities were left really high and dry in the drought, because they just weren't collecting enough in their base charges to keep things going.
All right. Thank you. I'll ask the, uh, members of the panel to give their input on these options.
Thank you. Um, I definitely agree that, uh, if we're upside down, uh, essentially in the base rate against the usage, we need to address that. Um, it's difficult for me, again, as you said intuitively, to understand how we materially benefit from a one point five to two percent annual increase. Um, that said, I think that any improvement in that ratio, given what we know about drought and drought usage, would be something that is important to look at and something that I would definitely support.
Chuck?
Yeah, I support, uh, option two for the simple logical reason that tying revenue to cost is, it makes sense. Who can argue with that position that we're trying to more accurately balance revenue with cost? If it costs more to provide base, the base should go up. So I think two makes a lot of sense. I, uh, also with Wayne, don't quite understand why it couldn't be two percent or two and a half or three. I haven't quite figured that out yet. I'm sure there's an explanation that I could be educated on that. Um, and maybe, maybe it's not fif- seventy, but maybe the answer is fifty percent. Maybe we split it in the middle and say, let's do fifty, fifty, and if it takes us ten years to get there, or twenty, it'll take us thirty at, at the one and a half percent rate. But anyway, I support option two. I think it's logical, I think it makes sense, and I think it's fair.
And I agree. And, uh, I don't want to wait thirty years. I think we'll be dry by then.
I, I could add, you know, another, another option really would be that you could just go to fifty, 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 right off the bat. It, it doesn't have to be gradual. Um, and I don't know why I didn't put that on that slide. You could just say, uh, you know, this is the direction we want to go in, and so we want to move to fifty, fifty. That is another option.
For the chair. Um, I just wanted to clarify then, but didn't you also mention that-
Microphone.
In doing that, the, the usage rates could potentially go down?
Not if you do it right away. It's, it's over time. So instead of doing a, say, a two percent, if I did a ten percent, that could happen mathematically in the model where the base rate goes up, but the use charge doesn't, and it's something to do with what we call price elasticity. If price goes up, we expect people's water usage to go down.
I see.
So you have less water used to spread the cost over.
Great. Thank you.
I think the only negative to raising it to, say, seventy is you're going to discourage conservation, which I'm a big believer in. So keeping the balance more toward the fifty or less or so would help people still pay a penalty when they leave a sprinkler on too long, or don't fix leaks or leaky toilets and things. But I, I think do it quicker. I don't, one and a half percent, I won't be around by the time we get where we need to be.
Yeah, and we'll, by then, climate will have changed even, even more. All right. I'll open the public forum if anyone in the room would like to make a comment. Pat Dell?
Pat Dell, twenty-five, San Juan Court, St. Helena. It's of interest to me that the three gentlemen who commented that they'd like it to go up much more than one and a half percent, none are on fixed income. I, I really appreciated the remarks that Catherine made.
At the point of order, I'm on fixed income.
Okay. Uh, I appreciated Catherine's sensitivity to the fact that it's very difficult for people on fixed income, and there are fixed incomes at this rate, and there are fixed incomes at this rate. So, um, I appreciate her sensitivity to that issue. We have, um, a lot of people in the city who are fixed income, and according to the demographic studies that I see, that's going to increase more and more in this city for a variety of reasons that we all know and understand. And so I think we do need to be sensitive to people on fixed income and try to capture our costs. I appreciate that. It's been very well demonstrated. But at the same time, have some consideration for the kind of people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Belt?
Again, Tom Belt at fifteen twenty, Hillview. Catherine, you made a comment earlier, two times, two, uh, subjects ago, about comparing St. Helena to other communities as far as we're at a low to a mid level of our rates. Um, does that represent the entire Bay Area, or does that re- represent the cities within Napa County?
It's within this region.
Would, how, how-
I, I provided a list of cities to the consultant to compare to, um, and they included, uh, Santa Rosa, Calistoga, I'm going off the top of my head, Yountville, City of Napa,
Windsor, and I think there were two other, I think there were seven. Ronert Park?
Ronert Park, Sebastopol, I don't-
Okay.
That's the, there's a, I, of seven cities that I gave a list to the consultant to do the comparison.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, idea how we compare to the other cities within our own county? Just out, just out of interest?
Catherine, do you?
I, I'm afraid I, I couldn't say, we have the information for those cities that the, that St. Helena selected for us. We could see which of those are within the county.
Okay.
And we could provide that information, but I don't have it with me today.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Belt. All right. Onto the residential customer base fee charges.
To meet California Residential Code, Section R three one three, which requires fire sprinklers, many new homes are now equipped with a one-inch water meter. All one-inch water meters today pay a greater base rate charge than five-eighths inch customers for reasons we've, we've already talked about. However, the actual water use at the home is really no different from a five-eighths inch meter. Water rates could be structured so that single-family accounts with a one-inch and with a five-eighths inch meter pay the same base rate. All other accounts with one-inch meters would pay the one-inch meter base rate. The options are, one-inch meters, well, I should, one-inch meter residential customers continue to pay more per month for the service charge, or for residential only, one-inch meters accounts pay the same as for a five-eighths inch meter in recognition that they're really not using more water, they're only having to put in the one-inch meter to meet fire code.
Any questions from the panel regarding this? I have a question, which is, um, and I was wondering this earlier, the only difference between five-eighths and an inch is the, the rate of flow because of a narrower or-
Right.
Larger diameter pipe.
Yes.
Uh, and obviously, the fire department wants, wants more water faster if there's, uh, uh-
Yes.
Some need. Um, so other than that, what is the justification of having two different rates if the water use is similar in the first place? I mean, why, why is there a structural-
Because the base, the base charge is, is based on your fixed costs, it's looking at capacity. It's not necessarily how much people are using, it's their ability to use it. How much of the system capacity could they use if they exercise the, that full flow rate through their meter? That's the justification. And then you try and capture those variable costs in how much water they actually use.
This is a little different from the distinction between use and base cost, because it's, it's still really use that determines the amount of water used, even though theoretically you could, at one pla- at, at the one-inch house, you could open a, a hose bib and leave it on for an hour, and you would get more water out of it than if, with a five-eighths inch pipe. But that's, that's a, that's a theoretical use, not an actual use. I'm, I'm just trying to get some understanding of why this is, is this a, an unreal difference? Is, or is it a distinction without a difference?
That's a real, so, when I look at the customer usage data, metered usage data for the last five years, those custom, residential customers' one-inch meters are using this, they have exactly the same type of water usage pattern as a five-eighths inch meter. They, they have a one-inch meter because the fire department, fire code says that they have to have that. Um, so yes, they have the ability to have, they have more capacity, they could take more water, uh, but the reality is that they don't. Um, a lot of cities, when this regulation came out, they just made all their base charges one-inch and smaller pays this much. Now, the reason why I think it makes sense in St. Helena to, to keep your five-eighths inch is that, I think it's ninety-five percent of all of your meters are five-eighths inch meters. It's, it's huge in comparison to the rest of the meter sizes. Um, but if, so if you made it one inch and less, then you're giving your commercial customers a break, because they now, they're going to be, so you're going to take an average then of your five-eighths and the one-inch meters, and it will bring the cost down for, for a one-inch meter. It would bring their cost down if you put all of those meters together. And really, that shouldn't be happening. The only thing you would be trying to achieve in doing this is that for those residential customers that had to put a bigger meter on because of fire code requirements, y- y- you're allowing them to pay the same as a five-inch, but you don't want your commercial cus- customers to get that, that break, because they truly need a one-inch meter for their business. Um, again, it's, it's just a, it's, it's really philosophies. How many people have you had say that they feel this is not equitable, or, you can go either way on this, um, and you would be, you would have a good enough nexus to go either way on it, so.
Is there any provision for retrofitting in the code, the new code? Would, would residential customers with five-eighths eventually have to convert to one-inch?
I don't know.
If they say if they pu- pulled a building permit, uh, maybe Steve has something you can answer.
Well, I can add a little bit. W- way it's currently operating is, um, they're only required to upgrade to one-inch if the fire flow calculations that they do, they have to submit fire flow calcs for the sprinkler system. If those show they cannot provide fire, adequate fire flow to five-eighths, then they have to go to one-inch. So it's not a mandate that they have to go to winch, one-inch if they have fire sprinklers, it's if the system requires that much water to operate.
All right. Chuck or Wayne?
Um, my initial thought is that I agree that, um, the, given there are only five percent of, uh, the meter usage, uh, that's one-inch, I would certainly keep all of the residential the same and continue to have a separate charge for the commercial accounts by virtue of the fact that they actually do require potentially additional flow through the one-inch meter.
Rachel, do you recall how many accounts this affects? Um, I, okay, so please don't, these numbers are not going to be quite right, but I recall it was about, I, I recall it was about three hundred one-inch meters, of which about two hundred of them were residential. So, w- we will, we can certainly tell you the, the real numbers, but in just terms of magnitude, in terms of idea of how many meters we're talking about, I think we're looking at somewhere around two hundred residential one-inch meters.
So, to put it in perspective, if, if twenty-seven dollars and whatever is the base rate today, that's for a five-inch, a five-eighths inch, what, how much extra are they paying for the one-inch? Do we know?
We do.
I mean, is it a dollar, a penny, a twenty dollars? I mean, to me, it's all relative to what, what the impact is. Um, in, in essence, if we allow the one-inchers to pay the same as the five, their rates are going to go down, revenue's going to go down. In essence, we're raising the rates on the five-eighths- Revenue's going to go down. In essence, we're raising the rates on the five-eighths inchers because the, the cost is the same, and now it's being shifted a little bit.
That is exactly correct. So you would, so yes, in the model, we're still going to capture all of the costs.
Right.
But you are absolutely right. By bringing down the, those 200 or so accounts, everybody else's in the five-eighths inch will go up slightly.
Right. So I think you have to take these issues in, relative to one another. In other words, if we adopt the functional and raise the base, this has a bigger impact than if we don't. So these have to be taken in context with one another. But my input would be, leave it as it is. Again, if we're trying to get away from subsidizing, if in fact what I'm hearing is Proposition 218 doesn't allow us to subsidize, the, the closer we stick to actual cost, I think we're in a sounder position, and it's easier to justify when it's fair. We can say, look, we're just trying to pass actual costs along. If we subsidize here, then why don't we do it here? Then why don't we do it here? If we have a consistent approach, I think it's easier to justify.
So just to chime in, the five-eighths was the, in the 20, mid-20 range. The one-inch meter is in the $60 range.
Big difference.
For the base rate.
Yeah, the, in July 2011, when we adopted the study, the five-eighth rate was 2481, and the one-inch was 5751. So cost of living increases on both since then. I, in the interest of, or in the environment of fluid dynamics, I don't, I don't have a firm opinion on this one. I want to hear further discussion as we go along, but I, I do agree with my colleagues that it should be fair and consistent, whatever the, whatever the decision is. I'll open public forum for this particular point. Does anybody have anything to add? Any questions from the audience? All right, I'll close the, the, the public forum, and we'll go on to drought surcharges.
Two things happen in a drought year. Water conservation leads to a decline in revenue because people are using less, and the cost to deliver each unit of water increases. A drought surcharge would help to offset the revenue loss during the drought and the increased cost per unit of water. Now, if a drought surcharge were to be adopted, there would have to be some specific drought criteria that would trigger a drought surcharge. That yet has to be defined, discussed, and determined. But I want to give you an, an example of why cost for water might increase during a drought year. In the agreement with the city of Napa, in a dry year, if Napa purchases supplies from an outside source, because it cannot provide that itself, but it's under the contract with St. Helena to provide the water, St. Helena shall pay Napa the actual price paid by Napa to fulfill St. Helena's requested quantity from an outside source plus a 10% administration fee. In addition, St. Helena shall pay Napa the then-current treat and wheel rate in effect to American Canyon. So the costs would increase, and we, we've also looked at costs for the surface water and the, and the well water.
Excuse me, will you define treat and wheel, please?
Yes. So treating is taking the raw water from its raw state and ensuring that it is fit for human consumption. And wheeling means moving the water through facilities, through some other entities' facilities, pipes essentially. Okay. These charts illustrate what happens in a drought versus a non-drought year. So in a drought year, total consumption decreases, but the, the place or the source of water changes. So in a, in a drought year, Napa, and we'll take 2015 as a pretty good example of a drought year, Napa water was 38% of the total water that was delivered to customers. Surface water was 46%, and groundwater made up 16%. Versus a non-drought year, take 2013, for example, you can see more consumption. A little bit less came from Napa, a little bit less came from surface water, and more came from groundwater. So it makes sense, in a drought, you would want to conserve your aquifer, your groundwater supplies. So you're using less groundwater. You're increasing the amount from Napa and surface. If you had, now, one drought year, it's my understanding the city's well able to weather the one-to-two-year drought period. But if you had a prolonged drought period situation, that groundwater piece of the pie will shrink. Surface water may or may not, depending, again, you know, how much is coming in, and you would be relying heavily on the Napa water, which if they cannot supply and they have to go to an outside source, you are then paying more money for. So costs go up, revenues go down. Okay. Provided that the cost data supported this, options would be to implement a drought surcharge or not implement a drought surcharge. Currently, the city does not have a drought surcharge. But as already stated, this would help to offset that differential in loss of revenue and increase in cost per unit of water. Doesn't necessarily mean the total cost increases, but the cost per unit of water increases. And that's something that you might want to have reflected on people's bills.
Question, does this include the seasonal surcharge or a rate differential we were talking about earlier? Because as we all know, in Northern California, every year is a drought year between May and October. And then that may be changing to April and November. Who knows? So are you distinguishing this from a, a seasonal surcharge?
I am, because they're, they're different cost calculations. We're looking at two different things in terms of cost to the utility.
Okay.
So this, this drought surcharge could apply to any of the rate structures. It could apply to a uniform rate structure. It could apply to a seasonal rate structure.
Gentlemen?
I have no questions, only input. So if you want to go on the questions first, I'll hold off.
Wayne?
I guess I have a question on how this would be implemented. What would be the triggering points? Would it tie in with our phase one, phase two, phase three
Yes.
limitations in the city?
So initial discussion with staff has been that really you would want it to tie in with your phases that are in the municipal code. However, those phases as currently written, they need to be revised. So municipal code would have to be revised so that this would coincide, coordinate with the trigger points with those phases.
Okay. All right, let's go from left to right with input.
My initial input would be that in the context of, again, trying to get closer to actual cost, given that there is this differential in a drought year, although frankly, I feel like the theme for us is a drought year. So it feels like it would not be necessarily the anomaly, but really rather more the consistent additional charge. I, I'm open to the idea, but I, I would, I would actually like more information as to specifically what that means.
Well, in terms of input going forward, I sort of feel consistently with all of these issues that the closer we tie revenue to cost, it's, it's very justifiable, and I'm in favor of that. And I think a logical next step from this would be getting more actual cost information so we can put it in perspective. And that's a recurring comment I have, that you have to understand the perspective of these. But in general, I would support tying cost to revenue, which means a drought surcharge. If we're spending more, we, we need to pay more. I think for a lot of people, it's counterintuitive. Gee, I'm using less water, but my rate's going up. Well, the fact of the matter is, if you do use less water, you can drive your rates down, even with a drought surcharge. So I see a lot of my neighbors ripping out lawns, putting in drought resistant. People are taking active steps. They're replacing toilets. So this doesn't prevent someone from lowering their bill during a drought by using less water. It's, it's not necessarily penalizing them. So I would say initially, I would support the, the surcharge.
I agree. All right, I'll open the public hearing again for anyone who would like to comment on this particular item. Seeing no hands or no ri, people rising, we'll close the public hearing and continue.
Okay. So we're going back again to this concept of a uniform rate structure or seasonal rate structure. Just to reiterate, all rates must be based on the actual cost of providing water, and they cannot be artificially inflated to discourage water use. Going back to Sam One Cup's run again. Tiered rates are not compatible with St. Helena's water supply and use. The cost to provide water in the summer months is higher than in the winter months, which would support seasonal rate differences. Seasonal rates do help to increase water conservation awareness. California Constitution, Article 10, Section 2, requires water resources of the state to be put to beneficial use to the extent they are capable, and that waste or unreasonable use or unreasonable method of use of water be prevented. So the concept behind a seasonal rate is to reflect the additional costs to produce and deliver water April through October, as the data shows.
Go ahead. Any questions or comments on this one?
I have no questions.
All right, go ahead and give your input.
Well, my input actually seems to be consistent thematically with what Chuck is saying now in that actually, if there is in fact an additional cost involved in delivering water in that time period, the seasonal time period, I would certainly support trying to capture as much of the actual cost as possible, being mindful of previous comments about not having an exponential jump in the actual rate per customer per month.
We're spending more money than we're making, so we're going to have to address that situation through one method or another. And the closer we come to, again, tying revenue to cost, it's, we don't have to look over our shoulder. It, it's a, it's a common sense. So I support option one here.
I agree. And I just want to point out that in the state of California, I believe there's still some municipalities that don't even have water meters. There's a base rate for water. I think it's still in Fresno. They don't even meter the water. So we're way behind on water conservation, and anything that we can do in our rate structure to encourage that, such as a seasonal rate, is important.
And to be clear, I also support option one, the seasonal rate.
And just a reminder perhaps that remembering that seasonal, it's just on the use. The base charge stays the same 12 months of the year. We're just talking about the use charge.
If there's anyone who has a comment on this, I'll open a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue. And I'll point out that the time is just after 20 minutes before 12. I probably have to leave by 12:30 or 20 to 1. I don't know about the rest of the panel here. But shall we continue and see how much we can get done between now and say 12:15 or 12:30?
Sure.
Okay, well, let's see how, how well we can do here.
Absolutely. I think we're pretty close. I think we'll probably be able to wrap it up by noon, if not very close to noon.
Do you want to skip this slide then, Jennifer?
Um, I'd, I'd like to go through this, just to make sure my notes are accurate. So just really quickly, I want to make sure that I've, I've captured the sediment of the task force on all these items. For standby rate, there was overall support to eliminate the standby rate. Everyone's charged a base rate and implement a fee to turn on and off water. With the pumping surcharges, just generally need more information on what it would do to other rates if it was, if the pumping surcharges were integrated with the overall water system. But overall favorable view to continue the surcharge, but also looking at what the differential is. You know, if it's a 3% or a 30%, the task force is really needing more information to provide clear feedback on that one. For the functional cost allocation, general support. There was discussion to perhaps move to a 50/50 immediately and not gradual. However, additional information would be needed to see what that would do on actual bills and being mindful of fixed and low-income customers. For the residential base fee, overall general support for the residential fee to be the same, but also need to look and get a little bit more input on what the, what that would actually do to the bill, and also making sure that it's fair and consistent. Drought surcharge, also overall favorable, and just generally making sure that we're tying all revenue to costs. And additionally, need more information on the actual numbers. And then the preferred rate structure of doing a seasonal charge is also generally supported, but additional information is also requested for what it would actually do.
Thank you for that summary. Any additions or corrections?
Just a clarification on the functional, functional cost allocation. I think what I heard from Wayne and from myself is the difference between going to 50 right off the bat or going 5% or 10%, I don't quite understand. I could probably figure it out pretty quickly with an explanation, but I would need to understand. I'd be in favor of graduating that, but there's something I'm missing here. So I would want to see that graph that shows here's why that's a bad idea and this is a good idea. So I would favor the gradual there pending more input.
Jennifer?
I would just like to add that in all of our discussions on each of these points that we have considered fairness and, and also sensitivity to those on fixed incomes. Want to make sure that's in the record because I think that's the fact. Right.
Thank you.
Jennifer, could you perhaps just go over that residential base rate again? Because I heard a bit more discussion on keeping it as it is, and I didn't hear you say that.
My understanding was that more information is needed either way. So there, there's a substantial difference between the five-eighths and the one-inch meter, and that it would bump up the five-eighths inch base rate but lower it. And so the task force would like more detailed information on what that would actually mean in bills.
Well, my input was keep it the same. Charge the one-inchers the rate, charge the five-inchers the rate. That was my input. I didn't have any ambiguity there.
And I would just clarify my own comment. I had no idea the exponential difference between the five-eighths and the, and the one-inch, and having that information and knowing that it's 5%, I would, I would agree with Chuck.
Okay.
And I'm not able to form an opinion at this point.
Okay.
So we're on to wastewater now? Are you up, Jennifer?
No, it's me. It's still Catherine.
All right, okay.
Okay. Good news is, there's not, there's not quite as much to talk about in the wastewater. Okay, we are going to review with this how the current rates are set. Okay. So for wastewater, there is a, also a base charge and a use charge. The base charge, let's look at residential first. Every unit, that's a dwelling unit, pays the same base charge per month. In addition to that, they pay per unit of water based on a winter average. So January, February, and March, the city computes what was the average monthly use over those three months. And then for the, for the year, you, you get charged the base rate plus how much that usage charge computes to when you look at the average month. So you end up with a flat charge for every month of the year, but it is still comprised of two components. For all other accounts, including multifamily, the base charge is according to meter size and the customer classification. And the, the usage charge is based on the type of customer they are. So put a little bit more simply, they have a base charge according to their meter size, and they pay a use charge according to their flow and strength of wastewater that they send to the treatment plant. that they send to the treatment plant. There's not a very strong nexus to support this rate structure. It likely does pass Proposition 218 requirements because it is based on the customer's ability to use the water that may pass through to the wastewater system. The challenge with wastewater is the same everywhere. Unless you actually have a meter on the other end, you're not going to know exactly how much people are sending to the plant. So what we do is we do our best estimate, we use, we look, and actually the city does do about as well as you can do. You take that average winter water use, which is a pretty good proxy for how much people are using indoors. But basing a portion of the bill on meter size is somewhat nebulous. There's a stronger nexus with water, there's a much weaker nexus with wastewater. So that's, we're gonna keep in mind here when we look at rate structure options for wastewater. I categorize these as scenarios one and two. So scenario one would be you keep your current rate structure with one modification. Religious places, essentially churches, I would recommend that you split them out into their own category because their wastewater strength is lower than commercial uses. And right now, they are lumped in together with commercial. So if we're, and always we're trying to achieve this proportional cost allocation as best as possible, religious places' strengths should be factored into that, okay? Scenario two is a new rate structure. Under scenario two, all types of residential dwelling units, so that includes single family, multifamily, mobile homes, manufactured homes, pay a base flat rate on the number of dwelling units. And then they also still continue to pay a use charge based on average winter water use. So that piece would not change. It wouldn't change for a single family, but it would change for a multifamily complex, okay? Flat charges, there would be flat charges for schools based on the number of students. So that moves away from having charges based on an account to actual number of students. Non-residential customers will pay the flat base rate by customer count and the use charge calculated on the average winter water use, which they do currently. The big difference here then, you can see, is that non-residential no longer pays based on their meter size. They just pay on a per-account basis. And in this case, in scenario two, their rates, all the rates are based on flow and strength of wastewater, not just the usage charge. Now the base rate also takes into account the flow and the strength of the wastewater. This has a better nexus to 218 for people paying for what they actually use. That's just reiterating what I've already said. So the options are to keep your same rate structure, but just break out religious places or move to a new rate structure, which better meets the intent of Proposition 218. And we've looked at the usage patterns of multifamily units and mobile home units. And it makes a lot of sense for them also to be charged on dwelling unit basis rather than like a non-residential account.
All right, thank you. I have a basic question. There's still residential units within the city limits that have septic systems versus sewer hookups? You haven't mentioned how that's dealt with. Are septic owners charged along with sewer?
They do not pay anything.
Okay. And then on the change for religious places, is that also available? Or could we consider that being applied to similar meeting places? Club places, rianda house, for example, meeting places that have similar community value as religious places? So that we're not favoring those who believe a certain way versus those who don't, but who have a similar function?
Yes, community centers and religious places have the same wastewater strength and certainly could be, they could be included in that category.
All right. Questions from colleagues? All right, so input.
Do we have some idea based on this, the new rate structure, how it would impact the cost, the bill, excuse me, for customers based on the existing?
We have set up the model. We weren't going to share any of those results today because we were really looking for input on what made more, what made more sense.
Could we assume that there would be an increase if we went to scenario two?
I don't think you should assume that, no.
Okay, very good, thank you. That was my question. So then my input would be, again, scenario two would be appealing to me from the standpoint that we would be trying to capture actual costs and it seems somehow more equitable, given the fact that the expense would be shared more evenly distributed across actual use.
Concur with Wayne.
And I agree as well. All right, I'll open a public hearing.
Jeff Ellsworth, 1434 Silvayner. Thank you everybody for this work. I'm gonna make some comments on county practices that affect us here in St. Helena. If the first point of the mission is to protect public health and environment, I think it's appropriate to bring these up. Sometimes I bring up county things and I'm told that it's not in our jurisdiction. The point I'll make about that is that if there was a fire burning on the hill heading this way, would we wait for it to get to our city limit line? Or would we fight it and get involved when we first recognize the threat? Our county keeps approving new wineries and vineyard conversions. The valley floor is pretty much planted out, so new vineyard acreages is being put into the watershed. The trees are being stripped and the vineyards put in near the reservoir areas. Pesticides, fertilizers seep down into our water supplies and also get into the groundwater. City of Napa, above the city of Napa, a vineyard conversion that's gonna cut down 24,000 trees is being planned. It's estimated that Napa City is gonna have to create a $20 million treatment plant to deal with the degradation of the water. So the citizens of Napa are gonna have to pay for a private entity's profit. So we are seeing that up here near Bell Canyon and Angwin, that there are vineyard conversions happening. I think we need to address this. It's our water supply. How do those pesticides and fertilizers affect our water quality? The EPA, some EPA numbers said that St. Helena has a water quality of 27 out of 100.
One minute.
Flint, Michigan is 20 out of 100. If our number is that close to Flint, Michigan, I think it's time we address that. The cancer rate in Napa County is the highest in the state for children and among the highest for adults. I think we need to look at how our water may be part of that. In the Central Valley...
30 seconds, Greg.
Jeff, in the Central Valley, agribusiness has pumped the aquifers dry. Towns are having to truck in water and the ground is sinking. So we too are surrounded by large agribusiness. And as a town, I think that while we have the resource of water, we have footing and the time is now to speak and to make sure that we're being heard regarding the impacts to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to the panel? This, yes, you can come up and speak to the subject.
Tom Belt, 1520 Hillview Place. I'm gonna take this opportunity and put a plug in for an interest that I have. I've talked to Jennifer about it for about a year and a half now. And in consideration that water rates are going to go up, I have a pretty good understanding of why they're going up. We do have a very valuable resource here in St. Helena. It's the Lower Reservoir on Spring Mountain Road. And currently, the municipal code does not make any allowance for anyone to go and use that water for irrigation. It's non-potable water. In the last couple of years, the city has been making some, let's say off-the-cuff permit approvals for a few of us who have been wanting to go to the expense in trouble to take that water, truck it home, pump it to our irrigation systems, and just water our landscaping. The problem is the municipal code doesn't allow for it. The municipal code only states that water can be used for dust control or for commercial purposes. I would like to suggest that in the consideration of making the municipal code changes that we're gonna be making, that we change that municipal code section to allow for the water to be used by those of us in the city who would like to go harvest it and use it on our landscaping, so that it would be legally done and consistently applied. I don't think that it's gonna have much impact on the city's water because there's not gonna be many of us who want to truck the water and spend the time to deliver it. But for those of us who are on fixed incomes and those of us who would like to keep our landscaping a little greener than what we're seeing going on in St. Helena, I think it'd be a worthwhile endeavor for the city to take on. I think it'd be of value to all of us. And just like to put that plug in for that, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Belt, for your comment. Greg? Sorry I used your name for Jeff.
That's okay.
I was looking at you and listening to him.
Yeah, we're changing names later. It's Greg Reynolds, Vineyard Valley. I just wanted, first of all, thank you for the education today, greatly appreciate it. In 2011, we stood here, my father-in-law stood here, and we debated the differences of the mobile home reality versus residential. And it appears today that you guys are recognizing us on the wastewater side. And I wanted to encourage, if we're gonna really, as Chuck suggests, tie cost allocation, tie revenue to cost, that the cost of supporting Vineyard Valley, I just want to reiterate something that we reiterated in 2011, that we maintain about 8,700 feet of piping throughout the entire park. We take care of it, so you guys don't take care of that and don't have to. The city reads two meters for 210 homes in the park. And there's only two bills that are produced, not 210 bills. And of course, then we bill the residents. So from a cost allocation perspective and the realities of revenues, et cetera, we're a cheap date, okay? And I think we want to protect certainly the people in the park who are on fixed incomes. But I just wanted to put that plug back in here. We appreciate you thinking of us in an appropriate way, but also realize that we do a lot of self-support in that environment there, on that 44 acres, in addition to, you know, watching the way that we use water appropriately, et cetera. So I just wanted to go on the public record again and we're recycling 2011 perspective, but something that still applies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We appreciate your comments and everyone's comments today. Thank you all for attending and giving us your input. Thanks to the staff and to members of the panel.
There is just one more item on the agenda.
Oh dear. Oh, next meeting?
Yes, next steps. So when city council approved the task force to reconvene, they approved two meetings. My recommendation is that we would hold an additional meeting, provide a lot more information, including actual numbers, and work with the task force on scheduling that as soon as we can get all the data from the consultant that's ready to be presented. We've looked at a lot, we've talked a lot. I think we're pretty close with the guidance today. We'll need to make some adjustments and some changes and then move forward from there. That would be my recommendation.
All right, Chuck, it's between you and me on this. I'm willing to sit for another meeting.
Well, we committed to that, so I anticipated another meeting. It's just a matter of when, I guess, and we've got, are we missing two now members besides Wayne and Katie?
I think Katie and Wayne are the only other two that we have available now since Donna resigned from the task force.
So is our goal to try to set that meeting now or just acknowledge that?
I do not think that needs to be a goal right now. I can reach out to each task force member individually, find a time that works, and also work with the consultant and the rate study team. There's a lot of us to get into the room at the same time and get it on the calendar, do the same noticing that we did for this meeting, make sure the agenda is out, press release out, and make sure the community is aware that this is going on.
And I would encourage the public that's here today to talk to their friends and neighbors about the process and get them to participate as well.
And please feel free to take any PowerPoints or agendas if you want to distribute them to other community members.
All right, well, thank you to all, and if there's no other business, we'll adjourn.
Thank you very much, yeah, thanks.